We will call the first common council meeting of 2020 on January 7th to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kurkowski.
Here.
Lorick.
Here.
Dukenyak.
Here.
Toman.
Here.
Gail.
Here.
Kuzikowski.
May everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Mary, would you lead us? Yeah.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody please take a look at the minutes of December 17th, way back then, 2019 was the last time we met. There's no errors, omissions, corrections, or questions. Entertain a motion when you're ready. Kurkowski make a motion to approve the minutes of December 17, 2019. Article 2. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye. Item 4 through 9 is resolutions honoring some people that have served the city. We're going to start with resolution 4 and its consideration of a resolution for Paul Esmen, a retiring equipment operator. Catherine, would you please read that into the record?
Certainly. Resolution number 12118-010720, resolution of commendation to Paul Esmen. Whereas Paul Esmen began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on November 6, 1989, when he was hired as a laborer, and whereas on July 1, 1992, Paul was promoted to equipment operator, and on January 17, 2016, promoted to equipment operator 2. And whereas in addition to his daily tasks at the Department of Public Works from 1992 to 2000, Paul worked as an auxiliary firefighter for the city of Oak Creek. And whereas in March of 1994, Mayor Dale Richards commended Paul for keeping our streets safe, clear, and safe, taking into consideration the severity of the weather. And whereas in November of 2016, Paul received a merit award due to his experience in the sweeper operations, and was selected as one of the trainers for the merit-based program for employee advancement. And whereas Paul held a lead role in the Department of Public Works evaluation team assisting the department on recommendations for future equipment. And whereas with his experience as an auxiliary firefighter, Paul volunteered to be the department's fire safety monitor, requiring him to inspect all fire safety devices in seven buildings situated on the Department of Public Works and recycling yard grounds, producing a monthly report of any problems with the system. And whereas Paul was a very effective employee during his years of service with the city of Oak Creek Department of Public Works, answering many calls for service from the community and providing immeasurable service to the community. And whereas effective December 31, 2019, Paul is retiring from his position of equipment operator 2 with the city of Oak Creek Department of Public Works, completing over 30 years of full-time service to the city of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Paul and his family in his retirement years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk be and is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Paul Esmen, passed and adopted the 7th day of January 2020.
Thank you, Catherine. Ted, would you like to say a few words?
I actually have two employees here that...
Okay. Oh, you know what? They both put in plenty of time, so let's give it to them one at a time, please.
Okay, yeah, absolutely. You know what? We're going to miss Paul quite a bit. Paul is leaving us. He's got 30 years of experience with the city of Oak Creek. We'll definitely miss him, especially this winter when we're plowing snow. He'll probably be looking out the window at us. But, you know, Paul was a very good employee, very hard worker. He was a good mentor to some of the younger employees, and we'll miss him training our employees and the work that he did for the city of Oak Creek. I certainly wish Paul a very long and happy retirement.
All right, thank you, Ted. Anyone else want to say anything on Paul's behalf? I guess I'm just going to add, I'm going to wish you a long, happy retirement. Again, Paul is a model employee, 30 years. One of the people that goes about his job day in and day out, keeps the city moving behind the scenes. It's going to be missed, but your contributions won't be. The people you affected, you mentored, as Ted mentioned, invaluable to the city for the continuity, for the high bar that's been set. Thank you for your work, and again, long, happy retirement on behalf of the common council and myself. Motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Gail, move to approve resolution 12118-010720, resolution of commendation to Paul Esmen, retiring equipment operator 2.
Kuzikowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye. And item 5 is a resolution for appreciation to Kathleen Esmen, retiring confidential secretary. When you are ready, Catherine?
Certainly. Resolution number 12119010720, resolution of appreciation to Kathleen Esmen. Whereas Kathy Esmen began her employment with the city of Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility on September 13, 1976, is a full-time confidential secretary. And whereas Kathleen Esmen faithfully served as confidential secretary for 43 years and three months. And whereas Kathleen Esmen believed that our customers were always the top priority and treated each of them with the utmost courtesy and professionalism. And whereas Kathleen Esmen was an integral part of the utility's growth from 1,700 customers in 1976 to more than 9,200 customers in 2019. And whereas Kathleen Esmen always worked with a cheerful and enthusiastic disposition, went above and beyond her job expectations, and will truly be missed. And whereas Kathleen Esmen received numerous accolades from the public, coworkers, and management for her kindness, loyalty, dedication, and team spirit that she continuously demonstrated throughout her career. And whereas Kathleen Esmen is retiring from her position of confidential secretary with the city of Oak Creek Water and Sewer Utility effective December 30, 2019, after completing 43 years and three months of continuous service. Now therefore be it resolved by the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek for and on behalf of the citizens of the city of Oak Creek, the sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Kathleen Esmen for her years of dedicated and faithful service to the city of Oak Creek and the water and sewer utility, and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Kathleen Esmen and her family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Kathleen Esmen, passed and adopted the 7th day of January 2020.
Thank you, Catherine.
You're welcome.
Anybody from the utility like to say anything? Ken?
Yeah, I'm the closest proxy for Water Utility here. I've served with Kathy since I've been on the commission, when I was elected 11 years ago. She's obviously a very valued employee. Sweetheart, her a person to work with, and she will be missed. Her contributions were great to the Water Utility, and we wish her and Paul a very happy retirement, so...
Right. Thank you, Ken. And again, another hard-working employee, 43 years, affected a lot of people. And again, these are positions, a lot of time, where people aren't extending thank-yous to you. You tend to hear the complaints of what's not right in the city, or perceived as not right. So, again, attitude is everything, and she certainly exemplified that. So, again, on behalf of the council and the citizens, long, happy retirement to Kathy. Motion, please.
Gail, move to approve resolution 12119-01720, resolution of appreciation to Kathleen Esmen, retiring confidential secretary.
Kuzikowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye. And item 6 is consideration of a resolution for Gregory Gross, retiring equipment operator 2. Catherine, when you're ready, please.
Ready. Resolution 12126010720, resolution of commendation to Gregory Gross. Whereas Gregory Gross began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on August 7, 1989, when he was hired as a laborer. And whereas on July 1, 1992, Greg was promoted to equipment operator, and on January 17, 2016, promoted to equipment operator 2. And whereas in March of 1994, Mayor Dale Richards praised Greg and his fellow coworkers for their positive attitude while helping to keep our streets clear and safe, taking into consideration the severity of the weather during an exceptionally difficult winter. And whereas in 2015, Greg received a merit award acknowledging his ability to thoroughly train new employees at the Department of Public Works, with patience while passing on his organization skills, as well as years of knowledge and experience to other employees. And whereas Greg was a very effective employee during his years of service with the city of Oak Creek Department of Public Works, answering many calls for service from the community and providing immeasurable service to the community. And whereas effective December 31, 2019, Greg Gross is retiring from the position of equipment operator 2 with the city of Oak Creek Department of Public Works, completing over 30 years of full-time service to the city of Oak Creek. Now therefore be it resolved that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Greg and his family in his retirement years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk be and is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Greg Gross, passed and adopted the 7th day of January 2020.
Thank you, Catherine. I'll invite Ted up again.
Greg is another 30-year employee. We're going to miss him terribly. You know, Greg was a very hard worker, always had the best interests of the city of Oak Creek at heart with all the things that he did. We'll miss him, especially his ability to train some of the younger employees. He was very much a mentor to the younger employees, as we mentioned in his retirement. Greg had a great deal of patience when working with some of the younger guys. He had the ability to convey his message, you know, very calmly and very clearly, so people could understand it. We'll miss Greg tremendously down at Public Works. It kind of hurts. We lost basically 60 years of experience between both Paul and Greg. But I wish Greg a very long and very happy retirement.
Thank you, Ted. And it's interesting, these two individuals were hired within a month of one another, and they retired at the same time. So, again, Ted pointed it out, great amount of experience walking out the door. We wish Greg a long, happy retirement, again. His contributions will not be forgotten. So, again, thank you very much, and it's really nice to see other members of the street department come out and pay their respects for these two gentlemen they worked with. So, thank you back there, Ricky. Item 7.
Gail, move to approve resolution 12126-010720, resolution of commendation to Gregory Gross, retiring equipment operator 2.
Kuzikowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And item 7 is consideration of a resolution of commendation to Laura Wing, retiring firefighter. Thank you.
Resolution 12127010720, resolution of commendation to Laura D. Wing. Whereas Laura D. Wing was appointed a firefighter, excuse me, on August 23, 1999, and whereas Laura D. Wing retired from her position as firefighter effective January 6, 2020, after 20 years and four months of dedicated full-time service to the city of Oak Creek Fire Department. And whereas during her years of service, Laura D. Wing has performed her duties admirably, looking out for the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens of Oak Creek. And whereas Laura responded to many major alarms utilizing her skills in firefighting and rescue with dedication and without hesitation. And whereas Laura has been an emergency medical technician in the state of Wisconsin. She became a firefighter paramedic in 2005, and during her career has cared for thousands of citizens who were sick or injured, always delivering caring and skilled emergency care to them. And whereas for several years, Laura led the department's fire prevention programs, which involved reaching out to hundreds of school-aged children during Fire Prevention Week every year. Laura was commended for her superior work in 2002 for the program she developed for the theme "Cover the bases, strike out fire." And whereas Laura was the department's first female firefighter, during her career, Laura has inspired many young women to follow a career in firefighting. And whereas Laura was commended for her efforts in the dispatch center during the Tax Day fires in 2003, and for the Lake Forest Apartment Complex fire in 2004. Whereas Laura was previously recognized as firefighter of the year by the American Legion Post 434. And now therefore be it resolved that the city's best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Laura D. Wing and her family in her retirement years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Laura D. Wing, passed and adopted the 7th day of January 2020.
Thank you, Catherine. Chief Kresic, would you like to say a word on Laura's behalf?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think I've had the opportunity to work with a more caring individual than Laura Wing. As a firefighter paramedic, one of the skills we model in our organization is that you treat everyone as your family member. No matter the circumstances associated with the call, you treat them like family. That was Laura Wing, a very caring individual, a very concerned individual. It didn't matter the circumstances of call, she was going to treat that person with the most care that she could, and that will certainly be missed in our organization. For those of you that knew Laura, she also had that special ability that when you were in with a room with her, she was your friend. Didn't matter if you just met her, didn't matter if you hadn't seen her for 10 or 15 years, she was your friend, and she was very welcoming. When our crews were together, she was the glue that held that crew together. Everyone was part of the group, no one was excluded. Laura had that personality to bring people together. You know, certainly we'll be able to replace the firefighter and the paramedic, but we won't be able to replace that personality. So, we certainly wish Laura the best as she starts the next chapter of her life.
Thank you. Anybody else want to say anything on behalf of Laura?
I'll just say, I've had the pleasure of being at different functions with Laura. I think the chief summed it up. She was a special person, you knew she was in the room. One of the most special things I remember is being at one of the grade schools and showed up, the fire department showed up, and the look on some of the young girls' faces to see a female firefighter walk in the door was truly remarkable. I think one of the most remarkable things is she really was a pioneer for Oak Creek. She was the first female firefighter on the force, and she helped blaze a trail, because things definitely changed in the fire department with the first woman. So, you know, things had to change a little bit, but she made it all the way through, without a doubt. And she did her job, and she did it well, and she will be missed. So, again, we're going to wish Laura Wing, on behalf of the common council, citizens, a long and happy retirement.
Motion, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Mike, with that said, Gail, move to approve resolution 12127-010720, resolution of commendation to Laura D. Wing, retiring firefighter.
Kuzikowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kuzikowski.
Aye.
Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
Item 8 is consideration of a resolution of appreciation to Jay Harvenek, retiring senior engineering technician. Catherine?
Resolution number 12128010720, resolution of appreciation to Jay Harvenek. Whereas Jay began his employment with the city of Oak Creek on October 26, 1999, as an engineering technician, survey, in the engineering department. And whereas on January 1, 2006, Jay was promoted to the position of senior engineering technician. And whereas in November of 2004, former police chief Thomas Bauer recognized Jay for his competence and professional manner in which he carried out his duties on two high-profile police cases where precise measurement and recording of evidence was essential. And whereas Jay has been a highly effective employee during his many years of service with the city of Oak Creek, performing a wide range of field survey and construction inspection functions, playing an integral part of the satisfactory construction of many millions of dollars worth of road and other public works projects, and leading the engineering department through numerous technological advances in the surveying realm. And whereas Jay is retiring from his position of senior engineering technician with the city of Oak Creek Engineering Department effective January 11, 2020, completing over 20 years of valued service to the city. Now therefore be it resolved that the city's best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Jay Harvenek and his family in his retirement years. Be it further resolved that this resolution of appreciation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit to Jay a suitable copy thereof, passed and adopted the 7th day of January 2020.
Thank you, Catherine. Mike, you want to say a word or two on Jay's behalf?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, Jay has been with the city for 20 years. As he began his career, he was at that time part of, at the time was, a traditional two-man survey crew. Wasn't but a few years into his career that he became a one-man show, and that was due to the technological advances in the field and the equipment. And so Jay has spent thousands of hours working out in the elements, extreme elements at times. And I think he should be proud of the work that he's done. I know that we all are in the department, and been a good worker and a good friend. And he's very much appreciated, and we're going to miss him.
Right, thank you, Mike. Anyone else want to say anything on Jay?
Just very quickly, being in the engineering department has really been essential to Oak Creek over the last 20 years. The city's changed greatly, the technology's changed, the things we've asked of the department have changed greatly, and Jay changed right along with it. And he's really part of the reason for our success, too, along with it. I always say, our greatest resource at the city for our success is our employees, and another model employee that's leaving us, which is all fair and due after a long work career. So, again, on behalf of the council and myself, we're going to wish Jay a long and happy retirement.
Motion on 8, please.
Gail, move to approve resolution 12128-010720, resolution of appreciation to Jay Harvenek, retiring senior engineering technician.
Kuzikowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Kurkowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzikowski.
And item 9 is consideration of a proclamation to James F. Schultz for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Police and Fire Commission. Catherine?
Council proclamation number 20-01 to James F. Schultz for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Police and Fire Commission. Whereas on September 17, 1985, James F. Schultz was appointed to the Police and Fire Commission by Mayor Milo Shocker, and whereas twice Jim Schultz was elected as commission president by the members of the Police and Fire Commission from 1993 to 1994, and then again from 2004 to 2005. And whereas Jim Schultz has been instrumental in the appointment of four police chiefs, five fire chiefs, and countless police officers, firefighters, detectives, lieutenants, sergeants, battalion chiefs, captains, and assistant chiefs. And whereas Jim Schultz served as a liaison between the citizens of Oak Creek and the Police and Fire Departments, ensuring that these departments run smoothly, effectively, and with the utmost integrity. And whereas throughout his tenure as a member of the Police and Fire Commission, Jim Schultz has dutifully served the city of Oak Creek in a thorough, conscientious, and professional manner. And whereas on December 8, 2019, after 34 years and three months of service, James F. Schultz resigned from his position on the Police and Fire Commission. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and common council of the city of Oak Creek do hereby show their appreciation and gratitude to James F. Schultz for his dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Police and Fire Commission. Be it further resolved that this proclamation be spread upon the minutes of this meeting and that the city clerk be and she is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to James F. Schultz, introduced and adopted the 7th day of January 2020.
Thank you, Catherine. This time I'll invite Chief Anderson on.
Steve Anderson, police chief. Just duly noted, when Jim started, I had hair and was in high school. But Jim has marked every part of my career going through. He was on the commission when I was hired, every promotion that I received, and he was a part of that. And just a little bit about Jim, I also believe he not only served our community, we've talked about our employees that are here that served years. Jim was a citizen serving on a commission for that long, and it's a little bit different. But he took it with great pride. He was, when I ran our hiring processes, Jim was always wanted to make sure everything was the fair, equitable process. He only wanted the best for the police department that I can speak of, or our officers that were coming up. I actually sent out that this was happening tonight to our retiree group, and several of them acknowledged how Jim impacted them through an email to me just through that. So, that's the impact he had on the city, and where we've come from in '85 to at least the police department, and where we're at now. So, greatly well-received. He's a wonderful person, and he deserves the recognition. So, thank you, Jim, for your service.
Scott Kanek, chairman, would you like to say a word on Jim's behalf?
Thank you, Mayor. I've only known Jim about seven or eight years since I've been on the commission, and he's quite an outstanding individual. I'm pretty sure he's lived his entire life in the city of Oak Creek, and he's a very, very proud citizen of Oak Creek, as demonstrated by his 35 years of service, almost 35 full years on the Police and Fire Commission. And he's a very proud American, too, as demonstrated by his service to our country in Vietnam. But he always was there for us with his vast experience and his years in the commission. He knew the ins and outs of all the processes, and he was always the person that we could look to, to make sure that we were keeping the train on the tracks when we went into some new areas or areas we hadn't been in previously. He was always the guy we could count on that had the answer, because he's seen it, he's done it, he's lived it quite a few times. He's very proud of the commission, of living here in the city, of the Police and Fire Department, and he is one of the reasons why our protective services have the great reputation they have and respect, and he's been a big part of building that. He's been, he was there when both of our current chiefs were hired, as well as, as read previously, it's got to be hundreds of people that came through the doors through our protective services. 35 years is a long time, and he did it as pretty much a volunteer. You know, people worked, he worked a full-time job and still managed to do this, this very important job for our city for 35 years. So, he's extremely deserving of the recognition. Thank you.
Anyone else want to say anything on Jim's behalf? Ken?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim was one of the first people that reached out to me when I first ran for office. He lives in my district. His steady hand, his dedication to the city, obviously is going to be greatly appreciated, and his service will be missed, and will be, obviously, is well deserved, a happy retirement.
Just, I'm going to just say, keep it very short, but his proclamation kind of speaks for itself. He was here through the appointment of four police chiefs, five fire chiefs. His influence, the choices he made affected this city greatly, and got us to the point where we are, and helped mold the city and set a bar for where we're at. So, Jim's service is not going to go unnoticed. Again, he's going to get the proclamation, but as the commission turns over and everything does, it'll all go back to remember what Jim did, and when you get in those situations, there's a member of the commissions out here. So, thank you for coming tonight. You'll look at that, and again, the wisdom just won't disappear on you, and he's always a phone call away, too. Anyways, we're going to wish Jim a long, happy break after 34 years of service to the city. And just on a side note, we just went through those five proclamations and commendations. That is over 175 years of service to the city that these men and women put in. That is quite amazing.
We'll move to approve council proclamation number 20-01 to James F. Schultz for dedicated service to the city of Oak Creek as a member of the Police and Fire Commission.
Scott Skel second. Roll call.
Alderman, Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
And item 10, Public Hearing for Consideration of Medical Support Services, Inc., for an amendment to the existing conditions, conditional use permit to allow an indoor rec facility within a multi-tenant building for the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue. Carrie. Oh, sorry. Read it in, Catherine, and then we'll go to Carrie.
Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Linda Naimella, PTNDT Medical Support Services, Inc., for an amendment to the existing conditional use permit to allow an indoor recreation facility within the multi-tenant building on the property of 140 East Rossin Avenue. Applicant is Linda Naimella, PTNDT Medical Support Services, Inc. Property owner is East Rossin Avenue LLC. Legal description there follows, and the date of notice is December 12, 2019.
Right. Now it's Carrie's turn.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a conditional use permit amendment request for the property, as Catherine had read into the record, and the proposal is for an indoor recreation facility. Council may recall that there was a previous conditional use permit approved for physical occupational and speech-language therapy in the same building this fall, and the plans include occupying about 6,000 gross square feet of that building, tenant space, adjacent to the clinic for tender-touch therapy. Gym services are what are being proposed in those two areas. That includes open play, classes, birthday parties, support group meetings, teen workout areas, and summer camps. This is for specialized equipment designed to meet the needs of children with sensory processing disorders, and be able to use equipment for people who have all abilities, and that differentiates this particular gym indoor recreation facility from typical indoor playgrounds and gym facilities. The proposed hours of operation have been provided Monday through Friday, 9 to 9, Saturday 9 to 5, and Sunday 12 to 5 p.m. They do have a maximum capacity noted, and that is really needed for determination of parking stalls, and parking is shared on the property, so there were no concerns with that raised at the plan commission. They are anticipating one to four employees dedicated to the indoor gym facility separate from the clinic. They are not anticipating any site or exterior building modifications save for future signage, and it should be of note that the site is currently under construction, so the conditions and restrictions reflect the time of compliance section to take that into consideration. We do have a suggested motion for approval, and if there are any questions, I'd be happy to try and answer them for you. Thank you.
As this is a public hearing, we'll make three calls. Anybody wishing to speak, please approach podium, give your name and address. This will be the first call. Second call. Third and final call. Okay. We'll move on to 11, which is consideration of the ordinance, changing the conditions and restrictions. Any questions from council? Seeing none. Chris, anything from planning?
We went over this extensively at the planning, and everyone was on board at the plan commission.
And not much to add, other than it's a needed amenity in the city at this time, so I think it's a good use of the space, so. Yes, Karen?
Yeah, it's a family that actually, my eldest used these type of services, and cared even cut a for years in his early life, and my wife spent countless days traveling back and forth to that, so a local establishment offering these kind of services, really very welcome addition. Pleasure to support.
Good to know. With that, a motion on 11.
Kuzakowski, make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2960 to amend the conditions and restrictions in ordinance number 2950 for a physical and occupational therapy clinic and indoor recreation facility on the property at 140 East Rossin Avenue.
Lorik will second. Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Our next public hearing is a PUD amendment submitted by Oak Creek Hotel Associates for an existing planned unit development, including hotels, restaurants, allowed uses, and amend the parking stall dimensions and upgrade other sections to conform with other codes reflected in the properties at 9141, 9191, 9315, South 13.
Catherine, would you officially read it in, please?
Public hearing number two is to consider a request submitted by Bruce Kinseth, Oak Creek Hotel Associates LLC, for amendments to the existing planned unit development to include hotels and restaurants as allowed uses. To amend the parking stall dimensions and to update other sections to conform to current code requirements affecting the properties at 9141, 9191, and 9315, South 13 Street. Applicant is Bruce Kinseth, Oak Creek Hotels LLC, pardon me, Oak Creek Hotel Associates LLC, property owner, American Property Acquisition LLC, and Oak Creek Store LLC. There follows the legal description. Date of notice is December 12, 2019. Welcome.
Carrie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a request to amend the existing planned unit development for these particular properties. A little bit of background, this planned unit development was actually adopted June 5, 1979. It is a rather old PUD that is affecting these three properties. We're changing the PUD to bring it more in conformance with current code requirements, which is why even though the request was specific to uses allowed on the property at 9315, this does extend to the entire PUD. Since there have been many code changes since 1979, and since that ordinance 805 was adopted, there have been a few conflicts, including with the particular uses that are allowed. This is a general overview of the parcels that are involved in this. You will note that the parcel in the middle is currently developed with the Steinhoffels' store, and we are particularly interested in the parcel to the south, because that is a vacant parcel. The parcel to the north does have a general concept there that is just showing what could potentially be on the property, but that would be an M1 use. The property is currently zoned B4, but it does show you that that property could be developed with a large use in the future. With regard to the request specifically, the revision to Section 5 of permitted uses in the PUD is to allow hotels and restaurants as uses in the PUD. Currently, they are considered conditional uses for restaurants with drive-through facilities and for hotels. The PUD currently only allows manufacturing, fabricating, storing, cleaning, testing, assembling, disassembling, repairing or servicing establishments, providing operations, provided that those operations conform with the appropriate performance standards that are listed within the document, business and professional offices, and then accessory uses incidental there, too. So, this does actually allow for more uses that are currently provided for in the B4 zoning district that are not allowed in the PUD. Another revision is to Section 9 for parking requirements. The request is to allow for parking stall dimensions to conform to current code requirements. Within the PUD, they required in 1979 that the stalls be a minimum of 9 by 20, and current code requirements are 9 by 18. Another revision includes Section 10 for signs, and that is to allow for signs to conform to current code requirements. The original PUD did restrict signs to much smaller square footage allowances than we do today. As again, I mentioned, the requests are specific to 9315, South 13th Street from the applicant, however, we are proposing these amendments for the entire PUD. And the request originally required, was for hotels to be allowed as permitted uses, however, the B4 Highway Business Zoning District does specify that hotels and restaurants with drive-through facilities are conditional uses, and staff has recommended, as in the proposed conditions and restrictions, that they remain conditional uses, as the operational impacts of hotels and restaurants with drive-through facilities can vary depending upon the deep details of that specific use. So, the additional level of review afforded by the conditional use process allows staff and for the plan commission and council to ask further questions and provide appropriate conditions to ensure that the development is in conformance with code and is appropriate for the area and the property. So, again, we've included that as conditional uses in the recommended conditions of approval. However, it is at the common council's discretion to determine whether or not they should be permitted or conditional. The amended conditions and restrictions have been included in your packet for consideration. That does not preclude additional reviews or hold the plan commission or common council to approve of any specific development, even though there is a general development plan before you. The suggested motion is for approval. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. And as this is a public hearing, we will make three calls. Anybody wishing to speak, approach podium, we'll need your name and address. This is the first call. Second call. Third and final. Now close the public hearing and go on to 13, which is consideration of the ordinance to amend the conditions and restrictions for the properties we just spoke of. Questions for council?
I have a quick question.
Yes.
So, with a hotel type, I thought maybe a long time ago, 10-plus years before I was involved here at the city, did they ever want to put like an extended stay there? Would that type of hotel be different than what's being proposed? Or could we indicate which type we prefer there?
Well, right now, the conditional use is to allow hotels, period. Whether that is an extended stay, whether that is not, or whether it's a traditional hotel, that's something that would come at the site plan review level. Right now, this request is just to allow them, period.
Okay.
But the reason that we've requested them to be conditional uses is to address questions like that, to make sure that the design is appropriate.
So, we can get it at the time of?
At site plan review, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions?
Carrie Alderman Dukenyak, 3rd district. 1979 is the last time that conditions were published for that land use. Has there been any movement or any questions on development since 1979, or is this the very first time someone's looking to do something on that parcel of property?
With the exception of the currently developed Steinhoffels' property, which used to be American, these properties have been vacant.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
And Alderman Kuzakowski, I misspoke, it would be at the conditional use level that we would be able to address your concerns as well.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Kuzakowski will make a motion to accept ordinance number 2961 to amend the conditions and restrictions in ordinance number 805 for the planned unit development PUD for 9141, 9191, and 9315, South 13 Street.
Lorik will second. Roll call.
Alderman, Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item 14 is informational, and is our summarized treasurer's report for the month ending November 30, 2019, and we got Barb with us.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor said, this is the report on investment and banking for the month ending November 30, 2019. Our beginning balance was $31,970,932.19. Ending balance, $33,487,193.37. Our interest earned was $54,251.99. The increase between beginning and ending balance was $1,516,261.18. Larger November activity, we received our final shared revenue of $4,986,892.60.
Questions for Barb? Okay, thank you, Barb.
Great, thank you.
Item 15 is the license commission. I'd like to turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski at this time.
Thank you, Mayor. I trust that everybody on the council has received and reviewed the common council report for tonight's meeting. Are there any questions or concerns from that report? Very well. Haven't seen none. Kirkowski will make a motion to grant the various license requests as listed on the January 7, 2020 License Committee Report.
Dukenyak, second. Roll call.
Alderman, Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
And item 16 is our vendor summary report. The list is in front of you, and if there are any questions, we can direct them to who we think can best answer them, anywhere from the city administrator to any department head.
We'll move to approve the December 30, 2019, vendor summary report in the amount of $813,345.46.
Kuzakowski, second. Roll call.
Alderman Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Kirkowski.
Aye.
Lorik.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Toman.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
Thank you for streaming us, or tuning us in, whichever it is. Hope you all had a great New Year's and holiday season. Thank you.